This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Are there any citizen comments that is anybody available to be a citizen? All right, we'll keep moving. Let's approve the minutes from the January 11th, 2021 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, hearing none, I they're approved.
Oh, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
If I read the city council kind of ordinance and the ones that we're supposed to be following, they approve their minutes under their consent agenda, and if they don't have anything else on the consent agenda, they approve their minutes by vote with a motion and a second and a vote. And I think we should follow that same pattern. So I move we approve the minutes of January 11th, 2021.
Mike seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
On the minutes from January 11th, it shows that we approved the minutes as the first thing on the agenda. And our ordinances require us to have an election of offices, officers, the first thing on the minutes. So for next January, let's have the election first.
And then approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Yeah, yeah, the ordinance is called for the election of officers for every committee, the very first thing on the agenda of the first meeting after the start of the year. I read all this stuff that Holly put together.
Well, and I'll say that there's a subcommittee of Arch, myself and Dave, and we're reviewing all the committee and liaison policies and procedures, and we're going to be bringing it up to council. There are not going to be many changes, but there might, there'll be a few. But Dale's spot on that, you know, this is how it should operate.
Okay, so if there's any additions to the agenda, does that go at the same time under the same motion?
You cannot add to the agenda once it's posted.
Right.
You can't amend it at the last minute? Like you could say, Holly, I want to add.
There's a official noticing requirements of 72 hours. And so, once the agenda has been set, you know, 72 hours ahead of time, you can't amend it.
Okay.
Sharon, were you asking, can there be corrections to the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, there are going to be corrections to the minutes. And that can be part of the.
It would be a correction. It would be if somebody wanted to add something to the agenda at the last minute.
Oh, no, not the agenda.
You can, you can modify the minutes. You can make suggestions to change to the minutes, but we can't alter the agenda.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. All right, everybody hears that? Yes, Dale?
No, just on voting yes on the voting minutes.
Yeah, call for the vote. Now, you had a motion and you had a second. So now call for a vote, and that should finish that item.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. To accept the minutes as submitted, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, it passes. All right, next business item is Andrea's resignation. We, I invited a woman to join us, and she has turned us down. And so, the second choice was Elaine Hughes, who is resigning, or done with the Chamber of Commerce as of the end of this month, April, and she has agreed to join the board. Kevin, you were going to submit her name?
Yes, this Thursday, I'll be submitting Elaine's name.
Okay, is there anything she or I need to do?
Nope.
Nope, okay. All right, is everyone?
Kevin, has she already put in an application previously to be on the library advisory board?
Yes.
Sharon confirms that she has an application on file. And I, I looked at the packet. They were in all those applications were in our packet last December 3rd, I think it was. And she had one in designating the library. Yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay. All right, shall we get on with our reports? Next item on the agenda is Kevin's council report.
Okay, let me get that. Okay, I'll try and get.
Okay, I would say I'm mostly interested to hear about this recording all of our meetings in the future, even if they're not Zoom.
So, yeah, I did have that on my, but I will say that the whole idea of moving forward is that all the meetings, not just the council meetings or planning, but all of the committees, boards, and commission meetings are going to be recorded. And so, that's going to mean that the meeting either needs to be on Zoom like this, or it's going to need to be in the council chambers, one of the two. Because those are the only two places that we have the ability to do recordings. If we had a meeting in the library, a meeting room, there's no recording capability there. And so, moving forward, once we open back up to be able to do meetings in person, the recommendation is going to be that the boards and commissions and committees have their meetings in the council chambers.
And why is it that you want to do that?
It's not necessarily me. It's, I think it's just a request for transparency and that all these meetings, I think people have interest in, not all, not everybody can, you know, meet at nine o'clock on a Monday morning, for example. And so, the, having the chance for, to be able to go back and review that recording, I think is seen as a good and positive thing. And it's not just our meetings, it's all of them, the airport, the golf advisory, you know, all of them are going to, we're going to request the same thing of all of them.
But we don't have a budget, or we don't, okay, expenditures, or anything like that? So it's not a financial incentive to do it, is it?
No, 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 it's just a matter of being able to see the discussion that's had about items that, because we do make recommendations to the council about the library. And so, I think people want to be able to see those deliberations is all. And again, it's not focused just on the library. All of the boards, commissions, and committees are being treated the same. I think, and quite frankly, I think it's a good thing. You know, these are all public meetings, and if we have them recorded and where they're posted to the city website, and we'll have the opportunity to see them, I think it's a good thing. If nothing else, it might potentially engender interest in, you know, the library, or the golf course, or the airport, or what have you, if people get the opportunity to see these.
How long are the recordings kept?
Must've been reading my mind. Retention period.
Yeah, so my recollection is, is that they can keep large amounts. I mean, we've got tons of storage capability with YouTube, and so they could stay on for years and years.
So tell me, once six, eight months go by, somebody reviews the thing, and they have objections or comments, or then, then what happens?
Well, they could show up to the next meeting, and they could, you know, make a comment during citizen comments and just say, hey, I watched this particular session, and I had this comment about it, and you guys could take that into account in any, you know, future deliberations. It's, I get, I detect a little bit of reticence on your part. This is not meant to be punitive in any way, shape, fashion, or form. It's simply a matter of transparency and allowing people different modes of being able to, you know, attend the meeting, whether it be live and in person when it's actually happening, or being able to review it after the fact.
I think it's just a curiosity where this goes and who has access to it. I don't want to see this, this Zoom thing on YouTube.
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be there. Yeah, that's right. So what happens is, is we record these meetings, they go up into the storage, that same place, you know, where we store the council meetings.
Come here.
When you go.
Hi, Sharon.
When you go to the city website, there's the agendas and minutes section, and you can, the library advisory board, normally where it'll show minutes and, I'm sorry, agenda packet minutes. There's a new link there for video, and you'll be able to see the video of that particular meeting once it's been posted. You can see Dave Street is on. He attends these and records them all and place them up for viewing.
Excuse me for leaving. I'm babysitting a dog, and he started to bark.
No problem.
All right, continue with your report. Does anyone want to comment? Or make it? Holly, Mike, Dale, anybody want to say anything about the recordings? Okay.
Well, I do have a.
Okay.
I've been an elected official in the past, involved at meetings that were heavily attended and very controversial things on the agenda. And I will say that while I understand why the city council wants to do it, frankly, it's a little bit of a nuisance factor, because now I have to, to be worried about who out in the community, who doesn't want to take the time to physically attend a meeting when they're, when they're open, can sit back and take potshots at what a group of unpaid volunteers are trying to do to help the community. Having said that, you know, we exist at the pleasure of council. It may or may not stifle people's willingness to participate in the future. And I just hope it's a positive thing. That's my only concern.
But Sharon, if I may, try to ease Holly's issues there. That when these videos are posted up on the city's website and in YouTube, all commenting is turned off. Nobody is able to write any comments on any of the videos, and they're all up there just for public viewing. If there's going to be any snide comments, they're going to have to come down to a meeting in person and actually say something. So I hope that kind of eases your conscience a little bit. I know.
I understand that part, Dave. I deleted my Facebook account over a year ago because of the vitriol, misinformation, and just overall nastiness. So that, that's where the ugliness is going to be. And I think all of the folks there in the city, especially those brave souls who run for it and are in elected office, mean how nasty that can be. So I, again, it's easier now for, for people who don't want to take the initiative to actually come to the meetings and participate. And it's probably a non-issue for this particular committee, except on those rare occasions, we're doing something that gets the community's interest, like a library expansion.
But your data is safe with us, so nobody can, yeah, they can't write snide comments on Facebook or anything like that, especially on the video. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, you're up.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll start off with the fact that the council hired an outside firm, SGR, to help us attain the next city manager. We are actually meeting with them this Wednesday to review applications that have been received to date. We'll be going through the process, Dale, if you remember, much like we did with Chris Hartung, you know, a few years ago when we hired Josh, various rounds of reviews with the, just kind of printed material at first. Then we get down to a select few, and then we'll have some in-person or kind of video interviews. And then when we get down to two, we'll probably have them actually come to Lago. But the whole intent is hopefully to have a new city manager, permanent city manager in place in the June or July timeframe. So let's keep our fingers crossed that that happens. The Lomond Port. I think all of y'all saw that we did prep work on the road prior to the winter storm. We were literally close to doing the resurfacing, and if we had gotten through the resurfacing, the storm wouldn't have caused any problems, because we hadn't done the resurfacing yet. It actually got down into the patchwork and did more damage than what existed prior to our patchwork. So we're having to go back and patch again, and we're going to have to do a different surfacing mechanism. We were going to do micro-surfacing before, and now we're going to have to do a complete overlay. That still is on the agenda, but we did have to set aside the previous bid award and put it back out for bid, and it'll be sometime a little bit later this year when that resurfacing, that complete overlay of Lomond will be done. But it should be done this year. A subcommittee was created consisting of myself, Paul Prince, and Arch Davelock to review city utility rates. And we've had a large number of, you know, complaints and comments from citizens about our water rates. And if you review ours compared to other municipalities, we are about the highest in the county. And so, we started our work to review those. We met with city staff. We've also talked with a previous consultant that we've used, Nalisa Haddon. We're actually going to have an item on the agenda this Thursday to discuss re-engaging with her. She's got a ton of knowledge and knows all the kind of the ins and outs of what we can and can't do, and what we should and shouldn't do with regard to our utility rates and how we can be strategic about that. So we're going to be discussing that this Thursday. But bottom line is that the intent of the subcommittee is to come up with recommendations to bring to the whole council as part of the budget process, so that when we adopt our next budget, that we set the rates appropriately. Our hope is that we can strategize and set up our, how we're going to operate in the ensuing years so that we can adjust rates lower for citizens, but we won't know until we've completed the process with Nalisa. Let's see, Nature's Point, many of you probably have heard of it. It's the area of their park near kind of east of Monticino in the Marshall's Vista area. They, there, it's the old Nature's Point wedding venue. We finally have gotten to the point where we're about to approve the development plan with them. It actually came through on the agenda multiple times. And we had some discussions about it, and then we found some issues with the wording in the document. And so, it went back to legal for discussion. But that should be coming back to council sometime in the near future, I would assume. Charter review committee was stood up. Most of you probably know, according to our charter, every three or four years, we're supposed to review the charter and bring any suggested changes to the ballot. And so, that is being run by Arch and Ash Lane are the liaison for that particular committee. And they are working now as we speak. They're going to be bringing back items for council to review and vote on as to which ones will appear on the ballot in November. The council recently voted to rebuild the Three Greens on the Lago Vista Golf Course, a numbers two, four, and nine, that falls up to three, five, six, and seven that we did last year. And they are going to start work. I talked with Chris this past Saturday at the elementary school PTO tournament, and he mentioned that sometime in May is when they plan to start that work. We did have some discussions about the new fire station on Lomond's. I'm sorry, did someone have a question or comment? Oh, I just thought, okay, no problem. But we did have some discussions about the fire station on Lomond's. Everybody's been, you know, asking what's the deal with those, even though it's not part of the city, it's part of ESD. Things have been thrown on us that it's our fault. I don't believe that it really has been. Bottom line was, is that there was a, an issue that they needed to install a backflow preventer at the meter there. They were hesitant to do that, but I think we finally came to the conclusion that they would, and they did. And I believe the station is open now. There's the chamber luncheon supposed to be there this Wednesday. So anyway, we're excited about that, and I believe work still continues on the Bronco Lane Fire Station. It hasn't opened yet, but I believe the Lomond's one has. We adopted a resolution, designated an official trail plan. This allows us to go out and try and get additional grants to help us with our trails over there at Sunset Park and other parts of Lago Vista. So the hope is, in this ensuing years, that we'll get additional trails in addition to what's already there at Sunset Park through grants that we're able to attain. Let's see, oh, another thing that's probably of high interest for most citizens is the winter averaging. With the winter storm that we had in February, that's a month that we normally would use as part of our winter averaging. And a lot of people, you know, dripped their faucets, or they had plumbing issues that, you know, caused leaks and so forth. And so, everybody was real hesitant that to have February be part of that. We discussed it at multiple meetings, and we just made a decision at the last meeting that we would use November, December, January, and February, we'd use all four months, and drop the highest two months. So we would use the two lowest months of those four will determine our winter average rate. And the staff went and looked at the, each of the months. And I'm sorry, each of the methods. There was actually four or five methods that we took a look at, but this was the one we finally adopted. It's the one that yielded the lowest overall city average. And so, we believe that most citizens will benefit from adopting this new method. And I believe this method is only for this year as a result of the storm. Next year, I believe, we'll go back to the normal November, January, February. We also formed a subcommittee of myself, Arch, and Dave to review the liaison and committee operating procedures. So I think I mentioned that at the beginning. We're working on that. We've got one last thing that we need to do, and I believe we'll bring results back to the council in May. The council had a presentation from the audit firm that audits our financials, and they came a meter or two ago. We had a lively discussion. They gave us a really nice presentation on the results of that. And we adopted the audit that they had presented. Recently, we've had some discussions about Sunset Park. We really have two things. Number one, there was an issue of bathrooms, and we were trying to push through, trying to get some bathrooms built there. The only problem was, is that it was confusing as far as the budget and what was in the budget and what wasn't for this coming year. And there were actually some items that were listed as part of the capital improvement plan that somehow didn't make it into the final budget. And so, we're going to have to make some adjustments to our spending there. We still do want to try and get some bathrooms in there, but we also are trying to adjust what we're going to put there. We, we had two more ball fields that were slated to be part of this next phase. And in discussions with our new Park and Recs Director, Chris Mobley, we're looking at changing that up as far as what we're going to put in. But we also have to confirm with Texas Parks and Wildlife that we will still qualify for the half million dollar grant that we had been approved for if we make these changes. So bottom line is, the city staff is going back to Texas Park and Wildlife to ask about the changes that we're going to make, and do we still qualify for the grant? And if so, it looks like we're having a work session, I believe, on April 27th to talk about roads and utilities. And if Texas Parks and Wildlife has come back and given us a ruling on our changes, we'll probably discuss those changes at that work session on that date as well. We did, this is another item that should be of importance to the library committee. We did vote to add a budget amendment for $13,600 to allow Danzy and Davis to create the MEP, Mechanical Electrical and Plumbing Design for the library and city hall expansion. They're going to work on that and get that back to us. And once it's back, then we'll be putting out the expansion for a bid. And then the final item that I was going to talk about is we, the council approved the city manager to execute a contract with Waste Connections to bring in dumpsters to help with the disaster-related waste disposal. I know it's a little late after the storm, but we're hoping to get FEMA approval to pay for this. And we had to jump through all of their hoops to make this happen. So that's why it's a little bit Johnny come lately. But bottom line is, is that those dumpsters should be coming soon, and the city manager will announce locations for those and times and so forth. But that's what I had, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Last time you mentioned that there may be a heavy trash pickup more regularly, that they may actually go through the neighborhoods. Is that, is that still a possibility?
So it wasn't heavy trash pickup, it was hazardous waste disposal. So.
Okay.
Things like that. And yes, that is still moving forward. And I believe that it's going to come up to do a final approval of the vendor fairly soon. And then, once it's in place, each person will be billed for that service on their utility bill. I think it's like a dollar a month kind of thing. And then you'll be able to arrange to have stuff picked up off your front porch. Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other comments or questions for Kevin?
I have one, Kevin. Has there been any dialogue about opening the city offices again on Friday like they had in the past?
Opening them, oh, you mean going back to a five-day schedule?
Yep.
Not to my knowledge. I've not seen anything. My guess would be that as the new city manager comes on board, if he has any desire to make that change, he would bring it to council. But I've not heard of anything. Now, on a kind of a different topic, you know, the reopening of city hall and potentially having council meetings in person. I think what we're waiting for is for a couple of things. Number one, for, you know, more and more people to get their vaccinations. And I think maybe by the end of May, we might be in pretty good shape with regard to that. But also, the Travis County, I believe their order for meetings in person lifts towards the end of this month. And so, I think when those two things happen, you might see city hall open up, and you might see city council and other committee meetings starting to happen in person again, maybe in the June, June-ish timeframe, I would, but that's pure guess on my part. We'll have to see how things evolve over the next month or so.
Do you, go ahead. Is that what, when that happens, would that lift like the, using the meeting room at the library as well?
I believe so, yeah. And quite frankly, I was on a lines meeting the other night, and Kathy Petroz was on. She's the POA manager, and she's the one that mentioned that that's kind of what they're waiting for before opening K Oaks and Grindy Pavilion and things like that. So I think it's going to trigger, the Travis County order lifting will trigger a lot of things, potentially reopening. And it'll be up to individual entities to make the decision, are they ready to do that or not, whether it be the POA, or the city, or the library, or what have you.
So does the library get to decide when they open the back room to meetings, or does the city council decide that?
You know, I think there's going to be a lot of involvement from, probably more the city manager than the city council would be making that decision. The mayor may get involved with that a little bit. I don't know that. Jan, have you had any conversations with Roger or anybody else about, you know, what kind of process you'll go through to make a decision about reopening the meeting room?
The last time we discussed it, was it a few weeks ago, when the governor lifted the stage five, whatever it was? Yeah, we did talk about it. He, I just sent him the COVID policy that we were still operating on. We had loosened a couple of things, but at that time, the staff and I were not wanting to work in here without letting people wear masks, including us, you know. So we wanted to keep a few things, and that was my recommendation. And he, he agreed, you know, he said to keep him posted on, you know, what was going on. And so, we're doing the same thing. We're watching the news, we're watching the statistics. We want to get back to normal. We do not like this. But our priority is keeping everybody safe. And so, we'll be really glad to have that meeting room open again and have the groups back. So I'm hoping, you know, we're looking at it almost on a week-by-week basis. So I'm hoping maybe sometime in May that we could do it, but I just can't commit, you know, to this time.
Yeah, and so Sharon, I think the final answer to your question is, it's going to probably be a collaborative thing between Jan and city manager to make that determination.
Okay, so let's say the next library advisory board meeting, which is less than 10 people, meets in person. Will we have to meet to be recorded?
I think the recommendation will be to meet at city council chambers, yes.
You say recommendation like it's an option. Is it an option?
I will, I will clarify that, and I will bring that back to you.
Okay.
But I, to be honest with you, I think it's going to be stronger than a recommendation. I think the idea is that we want all the committee meetings to be recorded and be available on the city website.
So shouldn't we go ahead and try to reserve that room for our, for the meetings then for the next year?
Absolutely.
So we'll be ready to meet there?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a problem, because, you know, the normal meeting time of Monday morning at, you know, between 9:00 and 11:00, there should be no conflict at the council chambers. So, but yes, that, I think that would be a good idea.
That would be nice if that were our goal, to go ahead and have an in-person meeting then for this next one.
Yeah, with the next meeting being at the beginning of July, I wouldn't see any reason why it'd been opened up by then. Although, you know, we could have another wave, and who knows? But, but I think that we should anticipate having the meeting at the council chambers in July.
Okay. Anything else for Kevin before we go on to Jan? Oh, and she leaves, okay. So.
Thank you.
I would ask Jan first thing about the library expansion. Kevin, if you say you're waiting now for Danzen to submit the electrical grid, you said you approved the Danzen dance.
Yeah, Danzy, so Danzy and Davis has been approved to do the mechanical electrical plumbing design work. And then, once that comes back, then we'll have a complete package that we can send out for bids.
So you think that's going to be in the next quarter?
So I believe we asked at council how long they thought it would take, and they didn't think it would take very long, maybe 30 days. And I think we approved this, you know, gosh, it may have been close to 30 days ago. And so, they may be close to actually getting their plans back to the city. And then, once the city has it, then the city can put it together in a package to put out for bid. And I don't believe there's going to be any delay. I think they'll put it out. And it's usually a 30 to 60-day process to go through the bid process. So hopefully, maybe in the June-ish timeframe, you know, we'll have the bids back, would be the hope. we'll have the bids back would be the hope.
Okay. And then we'll see how much money we need, because I know we have budgeted $707,000 for the complex.
Right.
Do you expect it to be higher a year later, year and a half later?
You can see Dale is taking his head up and down. I'd say it's likely. We'll just have to wait and see.
Okay. All right. Jan, your turn. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, one thing too, and I remember this came up at the council meeting when that money was approved, was this is, that money does not include any renovations or any furniture. So that's an additional staff to cover the area. So that's something that's going to have to be considered, you know, at some point, too. But Josh said they would, at that time, you know, they would address that when it came to it.
Well, and Jan, my guess would be that there's no way that the expansion will be complete before we work through the next budget cycle. And so as part of the discussed discussions in the next budget cycle, we can talk about the things that aren't already included. So if we need additional funds for those types of things, that could be in the next budget cycle.
Yeah. And I've even had a couple of people ask me if the cost would be less if we did not make it a two-story instead of just a one-story with high ceilings. And so there was another, another thing to throw out there, too. But I sent you all the statistics that, you know, we've been staying pretty busy, not like we are when, you know, prior to the, to the COVID-19 outbreak. But people are coming in. We're doing a lot of copying, printing, faxing, many requests for notary work. And Rachel's our notary here, and she's here three days a week. So she does, she spends a good bit of time doing that since it's not really available at City Hall right now.
Does she charge for it?
No, there's no charge. Some people want to donate something. So we, we just have them donate, ask them if they'd like to donate to the Friends of the Library, but we don't charge anything. We don't even mention a donation. When they try to give us money, we just say that's where it's, we'll put it in the Friends of the Library. So. But our statistics have been good, and they're picking up. We're seeing more people come in. It's been nice to see the families come in, the moms with the kiddos, the children. Some of them are so funny. I wish I could video some of these children as they're walking out with their books and telling me how many things they're reading. And they're so cute. We're seeing a lot of new families here. When the, as I mentioned earlier, we are still abiding by a COVID-19 policy. We still are asking people to wear masks. I, you know, once in a while, someone kind of complains about it, but no one's really walked in and just not worn one. And, you know, if they do, I'm not going to ask them to leave, really. It's, we're asking them to do this now because I just got my second shot last week. PJ and Rachel will have their second one pretty soon. And Christina, more of our volunteers are being vaccinated, and we're getting a couple, getting there gradually. A lot of them are wanting to come back. And so we're feeling a little safer that way. So we're just kind of playing this week by week, and we'll look at it and see what to do. For the time being, we are still, we are still quarantining the books, but we've really been looking at that, not, not quite sure if we still need to quarantine the incoming materials for 72 hours. We would like to not have to do that. Yes.
I was just going to say, the CDC came out recently and said surface transmission is not very likely. So that may be an idea to relook at that.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why we've been looking at, Tricia and I had this conversation with you the other day. And we would like to stop doing it because it's very time-consuming, and it holds up the materials. When you've got a long waiting list for a particular bestseller, it holds it up three days between each person. So that's probably something we will do away with here very soon. We are still
Is that your decision, Jan, to, to stop the quarantining? Is that a decision you and the staff would make?
Yes. I asked the staff how they feel about it. I'm, you know, and the volunteers, too. And so, yeah, so we're all getting kind of tired of doing it. Yeah, that's something that we, we hope to do away with here soon. And then that will free up the meeting room, too, when we do that. But that's not the only reason the meeting room's not been used. It's been for the same reasons the city council is not having their, their meetings there, too.
Jan, are we the only advisory board that meets in the library meeting room?
Typically.
I mean, the airport doesn't, Parks and Rec doesn't meet there, nobody but?
No, I think there's been an occasional meeting or two held there, just because it was maybe something called at the last minute and kind of needed a space. But typically, no.
I was the liaison to Parks and Recs when I was on council first time, at least for about six to nine months. And we did have a couple of meetings at the library meeting room. They may have changed that since then, but they did back then.
Yeah, there's, there's been two or three. And I believe we even had a special city council meeting there one time, too. So. But in the meantime, our Yeah. Did you have a question, Sharon?
I think she's chasing the dog.
Yeah.
We Jan, we did have city council meetings in the, in the library meeting room back when we were going clear back, I think, about 2015, 2015, 2016.
I seem to remember that. Yeah.
No, I was thinking when it came to, I was thinking when it came to recording these meetings, how much scheduling would go away, leaving more room for other meetings in the meeting room. But it looks like it's just us who has to go to council chambers. Okay, keep going, keep going. I got, I'm having my hair painted. I got a dog. I got company. I got a mother. So keep going, keep going. And I noticed, David Street, are you still listening? The meeting notice was only from 9:00 to 10:00. We won't be cut off at 10:00, will we? It should have been 9:00 to 11:00.
Yeah, I, I just have to put something in there. And I just usually put an hour, but no, you will not be cut off. It will keep going until I stop it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jan.
Yeah, David told me he has another meeting at 11:00. So I told him I thought we typically don't go longer than an hour and a half. But we, as you know, we have a couple, two of our book clubs, or actually three book clubs, and a genealogy group that still meet, and one of the groups meets outside. And the others are having Zoom meetings. Let's see, what else? And for the, let me, let me tell you about the summer reading program. That was a real dilemma to know, because that had to be planned like a month or so ago. And nobody had any idea of what it was going to be like in the summer. And with all of the library directors, we all stay in touch with each other, and pretty much everybody who's going with the virtual meetings, because we just, the thought of having 100 people in that meeting room without knowing what the virus cases would be, just would be irresponsible. And so for now, it's, it's virtual meetings. We're going to try to look at maybe some events we could do outdoors. And then, if the numbers really go down, and we can have groups there, you know, during the summer, have the kids there with their families, we'll do that. We're just, we're kind of in an unknown place and trying to figure it out, you know, week by week. But we will get everybody back as soon as possible. But you saw on my, on my director's report I sent you, I sent a list of the, the summer reading program that will be held. And Lucas Miller, the singing zoologist, I think is probably one of the all-time favorites, you know, has the animals with them, and the magician's always popular. But we have some good, some good groups here. And PJ did apply for a grant from the Texas Arts Commission to pay for one of those, one of those groups was part of that, was on their approved list. And they will pay for half of the fees. The library has to pay for the other half. And so if we get that, we win that grant, we'll get part of the fees paid for one of those programs. Let's see. And then the library expansion. Oh, let me mention, I did apply for the Women's Club grant, too. There's a, there's a program called Tumble Books. And if you just Google Tumble Books and, and public libraries, you'll find a library somewhere that already offers Tumble Books. And if you get their premium subscription, the local school can use it also without having to log into the library to do so. But it's a great reading program for kids. You've got people reading books, and it's very animated. There's, I believe, a National Geographic video, or video program in it. So if we get our Women's Club grant, we'll be doing that, using it for that this year. And let's see what else. Oh, I finished, I finished my 15-page, that used to be a 20-something page, but it's a 15-page annual report to the state library. And they ask for statistics like you've never seen before. It's like the most dreaded report for every library director that I know. We all hate it. But we, but it's good. After it's finished, it's good to see where you've been, what you've done this year compared to other libraries. So I did get our submitted, I submitted an application to keep our state accreditation, and hopefully, we'll get a good response from that soon. And as far as the expansion, we talked about that with Kevin just now, and he mentioned the main things. The interior design plan has been finished. That's been completed this part of it, what Danelle Wrightson did. And now we're just kind of waiting on the bid. Okay. Oh, and just one other thing. We lucked out, too, on the winter storm. We could not find any damage. We did have a small leak somewhere. I had someone come out and look at it, but he doesn't think it's related to the storm, and it's not going to be a big deal to repair, and something that affected our hot water heater. But we really lucked out, not had the damage that City Hall had in some other places.
City Hall had lots of damage?
They had a good bit of damage, yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. Any questions for?
Hey, Jan, one question. I had to, I had to step away. We're in the middle. So I apologize. Regarding the summer reading programs, say they're scheduled, are they, are they intended to be virtual? Or are we kind of flexible to see if we're going to meet, if the city opens up and all that stuff, or?
To my knowledge, they're, they're pretty much virtual. That's kind of the way that most of them were setting up their schedule. So at this point, I, I think that's what it will be. And as I was saying, too, we went along with, other libraries were facing the same dilemma. And we, everybody had to get on the schedules. If you wanted any of these people to do their performances, you had to get it lined up. They fill up pretty fast. And that's the way most of them were, we're setting them up for now.
Okay. All right. I had two, a couple of reasons for that. One is, if we ever decide we're going to go live on that, we could line up some volunteers to help with monitoring the, the live sessions. And then we're gonna, we're gonna probably, before the end of the month, we'll, we'll, the Lions Club will pop for some funding for those programs.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I think we send those to the, actually send those to the Friends of the Library. But, but anyway, that's it. That's, that was my concern.
We really appreciate that, too, Mike, for the Lion, from the Lions Club, as well as the volunteers that you guys provide. So. And you might have missed this, too. I said, we've talked about trying to maybe have some outside things, too, if we can do that, maybe some kind of special program outside. If we can't, if we see it's a big group, because you've seen how big, how crowded it gets in there for these programs, that is just, at this point in time, that's probably insane to try to do that.
Yeah.
To risk
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Because, I mean, it gets with standing room only, and that's just wouldn't work. Wouldn't be very wise, I don't think.
Thank you, Jan.
If you
Holly, you ready for Friends, Friends of the Library?
All right. I had so much to talk about today. I had to make notes so I wouldn't forget.
Okay.
The Friends of the Library, we had a financial review performed by a very philanthropic-oriented gentleman in the community. Thanks, Mike. And he made several recommendations about things we could do to make our organization a little better. Couple of the more significant ones were that we need to be backing up our data and materials. Right now, our treasurer, everything is on his computer in his home, which can get risky. And also, a little more detailed financial reporting. And we're moving forward with basically all the recommendations that were made. Along the lines of some of the other things that have been talked about already, the Friends wants to hold a book sale. We couldn't do one at all for any of 2020, and that's a significant source of our revenue. And that is also contingent upon the meeting room being available. So we are keeping our fingers crossed that it will work out for us to do one possibly in the June, July, August timeframe. All of that's contingent upon when the library is comfortable, telling us we can move forward with it. We talked about some other alternatives, like trying to do it outside. Well, doing it outside in the summer is just crazy. So we're, we're going to stick with trying to do one this summer in the meeting room. We have a tentative date confirmed, with the POA, to do our fall annual dinner. And as was mentioned earlier, they're not confirming anything just yet, but we're on their calendar. So once they do open back up, we've already got a date lined up. So we feel good about that. And we also requested a grant from the Lago Vista Women's Club this year. Hopefully, this won't have been a mistake. We asked for $1,500. Normally, we ask for $1,000. This would be used for the children's programs, both in increasing materials and in supplementing the budget for the summer programs. We didn't have our book sales, so we didn't have as many funds to draw on ourselves this year. Any questions about what's going on with the Friends?
Do you meet virtually or outside the library?
Well, we had a meeting this past week, and we met outside in a big circle under the trees. And that was hot. But it was so nice to see people in person.
Good, good. Okay. Any questions for Holly? All right. You're next on the agenda. But if we were in the meeting room, we would have a five-minute break right now to get a cup of coffee. So can I have a five-minute break? You all want one? You look ready to get another diet. Okay, I'm getting coffee. But don't start with, come on, you guys. Wait a second. I miss your doughnuts. I'd be getting a doughnut right now. All right. My sister will make me a cup of coffee. All right. Holly, you ready for old business?
Yes.
Okay. Would you start at the beginning? This is an, I'm just blown away by this. Tell me the work process. Who did you work with? How long did it take? How many hours you got put into this book?
Well, what I wanted to start with, the subcommittee. Talk a little bit about that. The subcommittee is Dan Olson, Andrea, Jan. And then Jan also asked Christina Frisbee from the library staff to help us, because there is a, a component of actually putting together documents, the policy documents. And Christina, in addition to being staff that can provide input, she put the documents together. And any document that the committee worked on, Jan also solicited input from Rachel and PJ. So there were a lot of people putting input into the things that you're going to see as we move forward. The formal committee, we met three times virtually using GoToMeeting. Each meeting lasted anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours. Dan was able to participate in one of the video meetings. And after each meeting, you probably have already figured out by now, I'm kind of a note-taker. I would send out meeting notes. So Dan, even though he wasn't always able to participate in the meetings, I would send him the, everybody in the group got the meeting notes. We were always exchanging draft versions of the policies and the bylaws as we moved forward, the binder table of contents. So everybody had the ability for input. And even though Dan was not at the virtual meetings, he did provide comments. He actually the virtual meetings, he did provide comments. He actually made a point of telling us when we started talking about things like rules, let's try to make it consistent with the overall philosophy of the library as a warm and friendly place. You know, these rules have to be there. But instead of just, you know, this is how we're gonna do it. And, you know, if you don't behave, we're gonna kick you out forever. Try to keep a little softer tone. So I want to give him credit. I would guess that at a minimum, everybody on the committee spent at least at least 14 hours in this past quarter working on stuff. Probably much more. And so I'm not going to say that we have got the best policy, but it is a policy that's well thought out. It represents a consensus. It may not be exactly what each individual person wanted. But there was a consensus that this is is what we want to present going forward, which anybody who's worked with a committee, that's all you can do. And so and we're doing a pretty detailed review of each of each policy. We're not just just looking at it and saying, okay, this has been working for several years. We're not going to touch it. As we've looked at each policy, we've spent a lot of time talking about, all right, this worked for the library as it is currently configured. But if we move to this expansion, once expansion is done, and we've got double the floor space, how does this policy get impacted? And so there's been a lot of discussion on these things. We've looked at websites of other library systems to see if what we're doing is consistent. Do we need to reevaluate? And so we've been busy. Having said all that, unless there's questions on our work process, I'll talk about the binder first.
Keep going.
The binder is actually something that I had started as a concept last year, when I first joined the board and volunteered to be on the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee. It was Tricia and I at the time. And as a new member to the board, I thought, you know, it'd be really great if everything I needed to learn was in one spot. And so I had put together a sample binder, and Tricia and I had met and gone over it and agreed, hey, this looks like a great concept. Tricia had some some input on it. And then COVID hit and everything ground to a halt. So when we started up again in 2021, I presented what we had worked on last year with Tricia, and we kind of use that as a basis. And then everything kind of builds from that. And so if the board concurs that this is a useful thing going forward, I would suggest that this be something that the secretary and the library director work on in conjunction to make sure it stays updated, that there be a master copy in the library, Jan's office or wherever. And so that it is, there is one place to go where it is always updated. Any, oh, one other last comment about what's in the binder. At the very end of the binder, where it talks about reference website information, we debated, should we actually print out the Open Meetings Act and put it in the binder? Should we actually print out the Texas State Library Association Model Library Advisory Board Orientation Manual? And the answer was, no, because not everybody's going to bother to read it. People who are interested in reading it can go to a website. We've got the website link on that page. If somebody wants to print it, Jan has said that they are willing to print it for them there at the library, and they can pick it up. But the Open Meetings Act, if you have looked at it, plus it gets updated or changed possibly every two years, that sucker is long. That's a lot of pages to put in a book that probably won't get referenced. And as Dale alluded to earlier, a lot of our meeting rules of procedure are actually laid out pretty clearly in the city rules of procedure that we also are obligated to follow. So it just seemed like a good way to pace some trees by not printing that out.
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I commend you. This is beautiful. This is this is just wonderful having this together. There's a few policies where it says still to be reviewed. Is that because the committee will still be on continue to work? Or is that based on anything that the city council or any policies coming from elsewhere?
It's it's because the committee could not handle all of them in one quarter. What our what our goal is, is to go through all of them. And by the July meeting, have all nine policies that have there's eight active policies and one that needs to be written. Have all of those ready to present to the Library Advisory Board. But by including it on the table of contents and saying that it's it's still under review, it let us identify all the policies we know about and let you know where we're at in the in the process. And taking note of what Kevin said earlier, some of the things we're working on probably are going to need to be tweaked again here soon. For instance, our bylaws, which come up next. This, this, you know, is just going to be an active ongoing process that involves us.
Well, I think I think it just looks wonderful. Kevin, I think as far as other advisory boards, I think with Holly's help, our standard is pretty high. I can't imagine the others have something that looks this good.
I would also like to second that, Tricia. If you go to the city's website, and you look and you click on the other advisory boards and the other commissions and things like that, and you look at the number of minutes that are missing from those organizations, there has been a real lack on the part of the liaisons and/or the city city staff members associated with those committees for making sure that it they are run with a record of what's taking place in those meetings. And it's the Library Advisory Board is at the top of the list of those people organizations that are doing their job.
And this goes back to the very beginning of when this board was created. One of the things I've also been doing in the background is going through and making sure all of our records are complete as far as minutes. And I can tell you to a certainty that we've got our board, not the city, our board has minutes and agenda for every single meeting since it was created.
Yes. And now you're gonna, I think because none of the other committees are as thorough as we are, that that's why you're gonna record them all. Because you don't know what they're doing, because they don't submit their meetings. It's like Big Brother's watching that, but us too. Okay.
No comment.
Okay.
They still have the best recording.
Good idea. Okay. All right, continue. I didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, I did. But okay, Holly, you're back on. Item by item?
Well, can we get concurrence on the binder? That this is a format that the board likes and would like to see going forward?
Do you would you like a motion that Dell, make us a motion to accept the work process? And what else? Maybe make your own motion, Holly, then you'll have what you want.
A motion to accept the administration binder format as presented, and recommend that the secretary work with the library director to maintain it going forward.
Okay. A second? Thank you, Trish. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, wave.
Perhaps we should amend that by saying Holly should be remain as secretary.
She is for the foreseeable future, I hope. Yeah. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Holly.
All right, who seconded? I was trying to type.
Tricia. That's right, you're taking minutes at the same time you're doing this, aren't you?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing over here on the side.
Unanimous. We have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, that that raises a question, kind of an aside. How is a quorum determined if we have a vacant position? Like at this meeting, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six meetings members present, but.
No. Kevin, Kevin is not Kevin and Jan are not any members.
Yes.
So there's Kevin, and there's the five of us.
Right. Yeah.
It's outlined in there. It's outlined in one of those documents as to what the quorum is based upon the number of people.
In attendance?
One over half.
So moving forward, if we have a committee, you know, let's say this Elaine Hughes person, for whatever reason, decides not to be appointed, and we move forward, and we still have six active members, we have to be careful in our subcommittees not to create a quorum, because at that point, the subcommittee meetings also become subject to open meetings, correct?
That's correct. And that's why I wrote to Mike. I had asked Mike to sit on all the committees and report back to me. But he would make a majority. And then it changes everything. So Mike is not on all your committees.
So with.
Have a majority of appointed Library Advisory Board members.
So my question is, for a period of time, I don't know when Andrea's resignation becomes effective, we have six active members. And committee that I was on, we had three active members on it. Dan, myself, and.
Andrea.
And she resigned. Well, okay, I answered my question. It was just two at that point, since she's the one that resigned. But if, for instance, Mike were on my subcommittee, and Andrea had resigned, well, then I would have had three active members on my committee, and we had six active members. And I know I'm getting pretty far down the lead, but this comes back to me being a little bit concerned, not concerned, uncertain how things are going to work as our meetings are recorded and available for public consumption moving forward. Does anybody have insight on how that would work?
I think if you're a subcommittee with that doesn't have a majority of council members on it, I don't think it has to be recorded. Kevin, would a subcommittee meeting have to be recorded if there's less than a quorum? No. You're saying no, Holly? It would be?
It would not. I agree with him. The problem is, my question, until Andrea is replaced, we have six active members, or as a three-member subcommittee considered a quorum, which would need to be an open meeting.
Well, she's going to be replaced this Thursday. So just don't have any subcommittee meetings between now and Thursday.
Okay.
Or if you do, only have a couple of members present. Because I would share the same concern, Holly, that as of now, a three-person subcommittee would be half, and, you know, technically could be constituted quorum. So.
I thought a quorum was one over half, that it would have to be four. I thought a quorum was not half, but it was one over what half would be.
And I probably would have to ask Aaron, the city attorney, for official ruling on that. When it's when it's 50/50, does the rule change? And I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you, off the top of my head.
Yeah, I thought it was I thought it was one more to be a quorum. So that it was more than half. It was one more than half.
All I would say is to be prudent, it'd be probably better not to have any subcommittee meetings before Thursday.
Yeah, that's good.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, are we ready to move on to bylaws?
Please.
Oh, wait, go ahead.
On the bylaws, we're in that there's a council subcommittee working on changing rules and procedures. Clearly, we need to kind of table this. And there'll be another draft brought forward once the council approves whatever ordinance or resolution that will be pertinent to this. But something that may or may not be addressed in what council was working on, and I'm gonna I'll bring it up, and maybe it's something that the committee Kevin is on is on, will want to consider it. Our bylaws don't talk about, and this was a question that Dan had brought up, apparently it's one that he's brought up in the past, and hadn't been incorporated in the bylaws. Our bylaws don't talk about creation of subcommittees. For instance, we have a subcommittee that reviews policies and procedures. We've had a subcommittee that's a nominating committee. There's a long range planning subcommittee. And I don't know that the bylaw team gets so specific that we talk about how committees are set up, with the potential exception of a nominating committee, since that's that's pretty integral to how the the board operates, and the cause city council specifies in their rules of procedures that we have to elect officers at our first meeting. Kevin, is there an intent for your process to address how officers are selected? Or is that something we need to administratively determine?
Sorry, I was looking for something. I don't know that we're going to define your the process. All that's defined is is that you do have to elect officers at your first meeting after the new appointees have been made, you know, in January. But inside of that, it's literally up to the the committee or board or commission to determine how they're gonna go about it. I mean, usually, there's just a discussion amongst members at the meeting to determine, you know, who's potentially going to fit fill seats. And you have a vote on it, and you're done.
Okay. So if our if the board's past practice for, I don't know however long has been at the at the, I don't know what meeting it would have been, I guess, the October board meeting, the chair would set a nominating committee. There's no no problem with that. That's how the board's done it in the past, from what I can tell. I don't know.
I think that the committee absolutely can define those procedures. And if that's the way you guys want to handle it, I think it's perfectly fine.
And since the the board, the bylaws don't address how subcommittees in general are created, I don't know if the board wants to put that in the bylaws or not. I didn't feel comfortable as since I'm the newest person on the board, putting that in as a suggestion. So I wanted to get feedback from the board. And, you know, we, this was the work of the subcommittee, but Andrea didn't really have an opinion on that. I think at that point, she had already decided she wasn't going to continue on the board. And Dan and I were the two talking about this as a concept. Jan, of course, was neutral on the topic because she's the library director. And so that's that's what I'm kind of looking to you guys to think about. Do we want to address this in the bylaws?
I would suggest just running as we have been, we've got everything else pretty well in order. The only question that you brought up is the quorum number in a subcommittee. So if there's not any objection of the people on the board for the way we run our subcommittees, we should just continue going forward that way.
I Googled quorum, and it's just a plurality. So one over half is. So, one over half is, like Tricia said.
Are the members attending?
plurality means the most without a majority.
Okay.
So, three is technically the most, but not having a majority.
Yeah.
So, I would again advise not having a subcommittee meeting before Thursday.
I think that's safe, I think that's safe. All right, so, the bylaw draft in front of you does not address putting in language regarding how subcommittees are set up in the consensus, and I don't think we need a motion on that, this is just a discussion, but we can do a motion if you want to, so it's documented in the minutes, is to not define how subcommittees are set up. And we've already talked about the fact that subcommittees need to make sure that they are, do not end up constituting a quorum.
Wait, you broke up, I didn't hear that. Repeat your last statement, please.
We've talked about the fact, administratively, that subcommittees are configured such that they do not constitute a quorum of the board.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, agreed.
Can
Go ahead, Kevin.
Can I jump in for just one quick second?
Yes, sir.
The instantiating ordinance for the library advisory board in our there's something that's a little bit concerning, and that is, it says newly appointed members shall be installed at the first regular board meeting after their appointment. So if Elaine gets appointed this Thursday, she technically wouldn't be installed until the next board meeting. And so, we'll want to talk, let me, I'll talk with Erin to see if she can be installed prior to then, because that would mean you wouldn't want to have any subcommittee meetings until July, and that's not reasonable. So, let me talk with Erin to see if we can get Elaine installed shortly after she's appointed this Thursday night, so that will help resolve that problem. Okay? So, I'm going to take it away as a to-do item to get with Erin about that installation, and please, y'all take it away from this, that you don't have any subcommittee meetings until you hear back from me.
Well, right now, my, the policy and procedure subcommittee, if, with Andrea's resignation, there's only two active board members, so we're okay. But what I was going to request, once we had the quorum, again, or the new person installed, I was going to request that could perhaps mine, Sidell, be appointed to the subcommittee. Dan is very valuable, but with his, his health, he it would be helpful to have somebody with a lot of experience on the board who can participate in our meetings, and real-time response versus getting to it when time and energy permits.
Totally understand that, and the only comment I would make is, is that I don't believe that is on our agenda for today, so you wouldn't be able to vote on adding Mike until the July meeting.
But we didn't, we didn't vote on, go ahead, Tricia, and then I'll go.
Well, on this section two, to this, that line, that's a recommendation from the committee. Why couldn't we delete that line? Does that make sense? I mean, this is a recommendation, and, and the original bylaw doesn't have that, that she'll be installed at the first regular meeting?
Tricia, that's not a recommendation. Everything that's in yellow was put in the because of a resolution or ordinance passed by council.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so council
So, y'all didn't write that line, okay. All right.
And what I would suggest, there is a discrepancy between the bylaws and the city ordinances, the city ordinances are going to rule, and if the city ordinance would say that someone's not installed until the next regular meeting, that's going to rule.
So you're going to request basically an exception to be made to that?
Well, I'm going to ask Erin for her legal opinion about what we can do there. And then, and then I'll go back to with subcommittees, they are a, an entity created by the board as a whole, the board has to take action to create them and to populate them with board members, okay? You can't, those are just aren't created willy-nilly, on the fly, without an agenda item, and so and so, bottom line is, is that if we do want to add Mike in Andrea's, since we want to add Mike to the bylaws subcommittee, that's an action that has to be on the agenda, and has, action has to be taken during the board meeting.
But when I first asked people to serve on the bylaws committee or this committee, there was no motion, there was no, it was like, please, Dale, take over, you know, policies and procedures, please, Holly, do this, and we gathered people to be on the
And I'm just saying that if we want to do it properly, you, it's got to be an agenda item, and it needs to be discussed and voted on for it to be official.
And I'm checking, I think it may have been in the minutes.
Oh, yeah, sure, it was in the minutes that the subcommittee was appointed by me.
That's right, the minutes, they say Sharon appointed these members to these subcommittees.
What I would say is, it's great that it's in the minutes, but if it's not on the agenda, and it hasn't been officially voted on, those aren't official subcommittees.
We're not limited to just meeting once a quarter. If we need to call a special meeting so that Elaine can be installed, then
Yeah.
Right.
And we can put anything we want to on the agenda of a special meeting.
Okay, Jan, you're trying to speak, and
Well, that was going to be my question, what Holly just asked, I was going to ask Kevin, and maybe that would be a question for Erin, could we just, could she be installed in a special meeting?
And let me ask about that, again, the official language in the ordinance says the next regular ordinance, which is important. Let me, let me talk with Erin, and let me try and get her, her opinion on that.
That would be something you might check to see if you want to change the city's ordinance on that, and take the word "regular" out of it.
Right, right.
To allow for a special meeting, able.
That's certainly something we can do, but it's not a short-term fix. And so I'm going to try and get with Erin to see if there's a shorter-term fix to this situation.
Okay, we may have some more questions for Erin before we're done this morning.
And that's fine.
Okay, keep going, keep going. We're running low on time, go ahead.
So, the bylaws, we're, we're on hold, waiting to see what other changes council may come up with. Do we want to add, based on our motion about the binder, do we want to add where it talks about duties of the secretary, that it includes maintenance of the administration binder? I think that would be a good
I don't think we need to amend the motion as it's passed, but if you want a new motion, we can go with that.
No, I was just suggesting that in the bylaw draft that's been worked on, section 4.5, which talks about the secretary duties, adding that secretary will work with the library director to maintain the administration binder. Just so it's, you know, these are our bylaws, we give our secretary position an additional role that's not defined in the city rules they give us. I just think it's helpful to put it in the bylaws, so it doesn't get lost to posterity.
That's probably a good suggestion.
All right, so I think that's it for bylaws for now.
Yes, Holly?
Holly, I have one, one question. Do you need anything mentioned in here that one of those members should represent the Friends of the Library? I know it's mentioned somewhere else, but do you want it in our bylaws?
Expansion and requirements.
In the, in the ordinance, the library advisory board ordinance, it suggests, it suggests it says that the Friends of the Library will nominate one of the members of the board. Yeah.
And honestly, I don't know how that's been accomplished in the past. I'm on the Friends of the Library Board, and we've never in the last three, four, three years, four years, taken a vote to recommend that one of our members be appointed to the board. I don't know how that works. That's just an aside.
And I totally get it, but my guess is, at least one, if not more of y'all are on the Friends of the Library, correct?
Yeah, I'm also secretary for Friends of the Library.
Yeah, so we're meeting that requirement, but yeah, it does say that they have the opportunity to suggest an appointment.
Um, we'll move on to the policies. The first policy that we worked on was the Patron Code of Conduct. And part of the exercise the committee went through on the Patron Code of Conduct was coming up with a standardized format, so that if you look at the top of the document, it tells you the revision date of the policy, and then it's also going to show the date that it was approved by Lago Vista City Council. This is information that's not readily apparent on some of the policies that have been adopted in the past by the library, and by having a standardized format where you can go and look at a document and know immediately the effective date, and that it's been approved by council, we thought that that would be very helpful. The other format that will be consistent on the policy document moving forward is the signature lines for the library director and for the chair of the library advisory board. It's my understanding that once a policy is approved by the library advisory board, then Kevin, as our liaison, will take counsel for a counsel to discuss, and hopefully also approve. So, so that's the mechanics behind how the document looks. Are there any questions or concerns about the
Are you saying that after we accept these policies, such as the Patron Code of Conduct, that then the city council approves it?
Yes, until council approves it, it can happen.
Has it been that way in the past?
Some of them. Should have been, probably, but
In the recent past, that's true. Prior to I, if I remember correctly, the policies were, were presented to the council, and they didn't necessarily approve them, it was I don't know what you call it, it was just proposed to them to see if they had any problems, but I don't, Dale might correct me on that, but I don't remember prior to, maybe two or three years ago in approving it. But we do now, take them to them.
And some of the policies that have been created were done not just because it's a good idea to have them, but because Jan needed to have a policy that was placed and adopted by council in order to meet, I think, some of the library accredited, never can say that word, accreditation requirements, like the internet and what do we call that one, the internet use and safety policy?
Yeah, Holly, we
Reminders?
We were trying to qualify for E-rate funding, for federal E-rate funding, to help with our, cost of our internet service, and to do that, we had to have an internet policy that was approved by the city council and have a public hearing on it, which, which we did. And it had to meet certain guidelines, especially that involved protection of children with internet, so that's why that particular one did, definitely had to be approved by the council, and we did have the public hearing on it. And we got the E-rate funds.
Kevin?
Holly, I did take a note, I'll ask Erin about that, if these new policies and procedures become before council, and I'll fill all of y'all in on what I get back from her on that.
Well, and Kevin, questions of that is, if policies need to be approved by council, for instance, the Patron Code of Conduct talks about, or, no, no, I'm sorry, unattended children policy, says that unattended children are left at the library after it closes, then the library's going to call the Lago Vista Police, and the children will be in their custody. So, if it's determined policies need to be approved by council, what about procedures? Because there's another policy slash procedure we're working on, the Interlibrary Loan document, and that, to a large extent, is really with not a lot of by what the library is part of, what the terms of that document are, because it's part of the Internet Library Loan program administered by Texas State Libraries. So, that almost is more of a, of a procedure, or how to do something, and that, since city council really doesn't have to approve the provisions of that document, if policies have to go to council, the thought would be, procedures probably don't, just policies.
And I'll ask Erin about that, and try and get some kind of feedback from her on that, for sure. I would agree with you, I think you made, your assessment is spot-on, but I'll put that in front of her and just see what she says.
Jan, was there any other element to that, that we wanted to ask Kevin to look at, or did I articulate it?
No, I think you covered everything. And, and also, just to add to the unaccompanied children's policy, we did, I did talk to chief Danny Smith before we added that last line about if the parent did not pick up the child before the library closed, within a certain amount of time, that the, that we would, the child would be taken to the police station, or the police would be waiting for the parent to come home, and we had to do that because we had one parent consistently, it's been several years ago, but consistently late, and I would wait twenty, as long as twenty minutes after we closed with this young child outside. And so I, I, we picked that up from Cedar Park Library, that's what they had to do. And so that's where that came from, and I did have permission from the police chief at that time to add that provision or procedure.
All right, so it looks like you've got two policies completed. And
Three.
Three?
Patron Code of Conduct, unattended children, and tech share.
Okay, so your committee will continue, okay, you're right, here we go. Um, has everyone read these, word for word? I mean, I have, has anybody else? Okay. Do you want a blanket approval? Do you want to wait till all the procedures are in here? Shall we approve, move, second and approve them individually? How would you like to see this continued?
This may kind of link in, this is another Kevin question. Kevin, assuming that at least policies at a minimum need to be approved by city council, do you want us to wait until we've gone through the process and done all nine of these proposed policies slash procedures, so that they get taken to council as a total package?
Yes.
And if we are able to stay on our timeline, so that all of this is accomplished by our July, July board meeting, I think that's also when we are somewhere in that timeframe as a board, supposed to present to city council an update on what we've been working on and talking about.
Well, I mean, that is a target date, that's not a hard-on date, in my opinion. I think that we'll do the annual report when we're when we're complete. I mean, we, like, 2020 annual report, everybody knows that not much went on. But I'd like to not, I mean, July meeting would be nice, but it might be the October meeting, Kevin. You, that was a suggestion on your part, I thought, not a
I'm going to, I'm going to put a little pressure on y'all and say, the preference is going to be, I think, we kind of had some conversations at the council level, especially amongst Arch and Dave and myself, who are working on the policy and procedure, that we would like all the committees and commissions to come to council one time a year, and have it be in the June and July timeframe. Partially, that's due to the fact that when you give your report, there may be some recommendations for things that you would like to see happen for your particular area, and we want to make sure we take those into account when we're working on the budget. Okay? into account when we're working on the budget. Okay. So I am going to really push hard for y'all to come forward to the council in the June, July timeframe with your, your annual report and any recommendations that you would make to the council with regard to budgetary items. And.
All right.
Let me, let me, one last point, Sharon, then I'll shut up. A very good point would be, um, as we move towards the, the building of the library, we should have the bids back by, by that time. And you know that there are certain things that are not in, uh, the budget. For example, furnishings inside, things like that. That should be part of the report to council in the summer timeframe, so that we can take that into account in the budget process cycle that finishes by the end of September.
Our next meeting is scheduled for July 12. And the council meets Thursdays, every other Thursday, or first and third, or?
First and third.
All right.
And frankly, recent, recently, and, and as necessary, we've been, we've had special meetings multiple times over the last couple of months, and we'll probably continue to have them over the next several months because of the replacement of the city manager and, you know, getting a permanent city manager.
Well, we could meet again before, or we could, if you had it at the end of July, instead of in June or whatever, we would have another meeting by then.
Uh, I hear what you're saying. And if that's what you guys want to do, that's fine. But I would say no later than end of July. But my guess is you guys are gonna have to have a meeting between now and July 12, at the very least, so you can install Elaine.
When you say install, that means we vote and accept her? I mean, she has to be sworn in by Sandra Barton, but.
Correct. I, I'm gonna ask Erin this, but the official ordinance language says that new members are installed at the first regular meeting after they're appointed. In this case, that wouldn't be until July 12. And so I'm gonna try and work with Erin to see if there's a way that, that we can still finesse, finesse that and get her in before then, so that your subcommittees can operate. And I'm also gonna ask, can the subcommittee operate even if she isn't officially installed? So I'm gonna get some information on that. But my guess is, is that y'all might have to have another meeting before the July 12 timeframe, partially due to the fact that I don't think we're gonna get to everything by 11 o'clock that's on this agenda.
I'm almost done, if that helps.
Yeah, no, no, no disrespect, Holly, you've done great. That wasn't a comment on yourself at all. There's just quite a bit of stuff left. I mean, Mitch has to talk about the long range plan, plus there's several other things that are still there. I don't know that you're gonna get to all those by 11.
Well, if we need to do a, a report to city council, we probably need a special meeting just to talk about who's on that subcommittee.
Right. Dale, what'd you want to say?
Well, I just think the annual report to the city council, uh, doesn't mean that we have to have all the policies and procedures approved at that time you give the annual report. Uh, the salient parts of that annual report would be, uh, the kind of description of how the library staff has managed the library during the, the COVID-19 pandemic now, and, uh, and what things we've been working on, and the subcommittees that are operative. Uh, and I think getting there as soon as possible to try to give them the story about our needs for the new expansion, uh, is, is very valuable to them for their, their budget, budgetary thing. So we don't have to have all this, but I do think we probably need a couple of meetings before July, uh, just to, just to do things like this.
And, and Sharon, uh, Mitch, I, I would make one correction to what she said. I agree with most of it, but, but, um, the operating procedures of the library during COVID and so forth, to me, that's something that Jan should come and, and report on. It shouldn't be responsibility of the library advisory board. Um, when you guys come and give your annual report, it should be a summary of the efforts by the board and recommendations that the board has for the library to the council. That's what I would focus on.
I think in the past, it's been Sharon and Jan that have appeared to, in front of the city council.
And, and, and that's part of what Dave and Arch and I have been talking about. That's gonna be our recommendation, that it be no more than someone like the, the chair of the committee, and then the director of that particular area would come before the council to give that report. Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Uh, before we adjourn today, we will set up a meeting date. But Holly, you were almost done. Why don't you complete your efforts here?
Um, there are three policies, the Patron Code of Conduct, the Unattended Children Policy, and the Tech Share Policy. The committee is, has completed their work on these three policies, and they're ready for, um, adoption by the board. If the intent is to present them all at once to council, I don't know if you want to wait as a board and accept them or approve them as a board until closer to when we're going to present them to council. Nevertheless, the committee is not going to work on these three anymore at this point, unless, um, there's changes that show up in the, the doc, the information that, that Kevin's group's working on that impacts these policies.
Does anybody have any suggested changes to those three policies that Holly and her subcommittee have brought forward to us?
I do not.
Did I move that the library advisory board adopt these three policies as presented? Patron Code of Conduct, Unattended Children, and Tech Share?
Yes, Kevin?
Sharon, the only thing I would suggest, Mitch, um, I, I don't think that you guys are gonna adopt them. I think what you're doing is you're recommending these be brought forward to council for council to adopt. I believe that's the way you would probably phrase that.
Well, and we, we approved the, the, we approved them for submission to the city council.
Bingo. Perfect.
Trish seconds the motion. Is there any discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the motion to recommend this to the city council, say aye, raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Holly, this is a work of art. It's, it's well organized. It's consistent. Every page is, it's just beautiful.
Well, that's.
And I'd like, like, as people move on, if, if you leave the board for any reason, I'd like you to turn your book in, so we can keep it updated and give it to our next whomever.
And Jan, I'll be out and about, uh, this afternoon. I'll drop by the library to pick up my binder.
I can't believe you haven't seen it yet, Kevin. It's gonna blow you away. Okay.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Um, any, anything else for Holly before we move on?
Just as a point of reference, back in 1996, when I got appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I was handed a binder that had all this, all the pieces of what was involved with being on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And after I left that two years later, I handed my binder over to my replacement. So this is not unusual, and probably Holly has seen this before in her city kinds of organizations she's belonged to, to have this kind of organization.
And I have that, I have the binder from when I joined the library advisory board. It was called an orientation packet. And I, um, I've been maintaining that on my own. Okay, are you ready, Dale? Tell us about, uh, introduce your committee and tell us how you came about with your changes. What long range plan? Is it in this book? It is? Yes, there it is.
Yes, Holly included it. I, I did want to make one comment relating to the city's ordinance, talking about, um, those commissions that are not regulatory. And in the city's, uh, procedures, I had it out here, but I can't find it right now. The ordinance, uh, it doesn't call us the library advisory board. It calls us, uh, another name. There we go. Page 17 of the ordinance of, uh, 1809, 2009, it calls us the Logovista Public Library Committee. And Kevin is aware of that being the wrong title for us. And I think going forward, Kevin, you're gonna point that out to whatever procedures you guys take up, right?
Yep. Mitch, I've already done that. I sent it to both the mayor and to Erin, and Erin said it should be an easy fix. I think you should see it come up on a, a relatively soon, a council meeting for us to make that quick change. It'll probably be part of the consent agenda.
Sounds good. Going back to the annual review for the long range plan, uh, Tricia Upchurch, Mike Saydel, and I were appointed to do that with me being, having the lead. And looking back at the previous two annual reviews that were done by Tricia and Mike, um, in 2018 and 2019, the latest one was in September 2019, it looked to me like something that needed to, see, we needed to retain that review in our document of reviews as kind of a base of how progress we were making in 2019, prior to, uh, the, the pandemic that came shortly after that. So I kind of made the decision that maybe we should retain that and then show a review that we did here in this spring as additional comments on top of that, of what changes have been done just as we've operated. And it's fairly, uh, fairly obvious that if we are doing now this review in March and April, that we didn't do it on an annual basis, because 2020, we were kind of shut down and, and didn't think about, uh, doing anything actively. But with Tricia and, uh, Tricia and Mike having already provided all this background information on the 2017 long range plan, I turned upon myself to get more familiar with this, uh, long range plan annual review. And so I met directly with Jan to go through and get her input on the things that were here, and then put out a straw man of the results of my meeting with Jan for Tricia and Mike to review, to see if they had updates or comments to make on the straw man that I, that I had come up with, with Jan. So we did not actually meet, the three of us, in any virtual meeting or any present meeting. Um, I thought it would be probably more helpful if I just did the, the initial work and tried to document where we were with Jan's input. And so the documents you have, and hopefully you have, uh, the one that has the gray, light gray highlighting, uh, on it for the April, what we call now the April 21, uh, 21 review. And we can go through these items that are on here. Uh, a lot of them say no change, uh, because of no change from, uh, September 2019. And that allows us then to go back and look at the prior to COVID pandemic review, uh, status, and kind of work on that. So we could not, uh, we could not explain everything in here as to how we operated differently, or things that were done differently than before. I think that's something that has already been mentioned, that Jan can explain during the review to the city council and make sure they understand how active they've been and open, except for three weeks back in the spring of 2020. I think it was just three. And, uh, so you, do any of you have any questions about the status, any, on any of these specific items that are in our long range plan review?
I do. Um, yeah, there are a couple of, I, I, there are a number of things in here, I think, that we could elaborate a little bit more on. Or, for instance, the first page at the bottom where we talked about, um, monitoring, it's, it's 1B, I'm sorry, 1.1B, where we talk about monitoring changes in demographics, including age groups and second language learners. We, we did our update in September 2019, but then at 20, uh, April 21st, it says no change. I would rather see something there that says ongoing and progress made, because we really have purchased many more books, uh, about diversity and by authors, African-American or Asian authors. And no change looks like we haven't done anything at my first glance. Um, and I saw that on something else, too. Another, I marked another area over here. But, um, I saw, I, I made a lot of notes on it that, um, I think we could have elaborated a little bit more, that shows that we really, um, did a few things. And, um, looking for another specific here.
Trisha?
I have one correction. I have a correction.
Yeah.
On 1.1D.
Mm-hmm.
That should be LVWC, not LVSC, because that's a, that's the women's club, the Logovista Women's Club Care Group.
LW?
LVWC, instead of LVSC.
Thank you.
So are you reading this for the first time, Trisha?
Nope.
Well, no, I was not involved in, in the, uh, I was not involved in the review with Jan. I was given the, the review afterward and asked to comment.
And make any corrections or suggestions for change. But Jan, you've got several, you say?
Um.
Like the one you were talking about, uh, on 1 dot 1B, uh, it should say we are continuing to buy more books written by and about African-Americans, Asians, Hispanics, and other SSCEs.
Well, that, that is mentioned in September 19. We could even just say it's ongoing. There's been progress made and it's ongoing, because it will be ongoing. We will always be, um, trying to build a diverse collection, you know, that would appeal to everyone.
And, and I, I was hoping, uh, rather that we, we, um, avoid the use of ongoing, but anytime we can be more specific, just because, yes, I agree with you, the progress is being made. So I think if we put a, a specific example or something that's done, it's a lot more effective than just saying it's ongoing. Because obviously, all of these are still always ongoing. But I think the plan should be as specific as we can with what's being done that's different, or that's highlighting what had been done in the past.
Maybe even like giving a statistic of the, the books that were added to the collection since that was written, something like that.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great. Um, there were just a few corrections, too, of, um, or things we could have elaborated a little bit more on. I, I don't know that it's exactly ready to present yet.
And I would agree. It seems to me like the committee needs to meet as a whole, bring us a product that is recommended by the entire committee and presented almost, I mean, if we have to go through and change all the no changes, because there's another one on a number 2.1, there's another one on 3.1, there's another one on 2.4. I mean, there's, there's one on every one. What do you want to do as a committee? I, like I said, I don't think, plus I didn't get the.
I can give one more note, if that would help on.
I picked up the binder and then I realized I was supposed to pick up a different page, but, uh, okay. So, I don't know. What do you want to do?
Well, it looks like we need.
You say there's a lot. Go ahead, Dale.
Back and meet, but, uh, when, if, if we had already reported in September 2019, that, uh, the, the item is ongoing, uh, why, what is wrong with an April of 21 with a no change, meaning that it was still ongoing, right? Promote state share, which is tech share and interlibrary loan. Uh, in September 19, it was ongoing. In April 21, there's no change. Or do you want to just repeat ongoing? Or do you wanna just repeat ongoing?
I think for me, the, just when I glance at, when I see no change, it's a nega-, it looks like a negative to me. And I'm, I'm just trying to see how someone else might look at, I'd rather see something that looks more positive than no change, although it, well, in, in some cases, there are some changes, but, um, that's just my personal opinion.
Well, Tricia, this is one of the things you brought up when I used, uh, ongoing, uh, you thought that, what's the definition of ongoing versus no change? And I guess we'll need to meet Mike and Tricia and Jan and, and go through this.
Oh, if we do that, then we can expect that all the comments that people might have would be, would be, uh, presented before that, right?
That's a good review.
Question, comment? Kevin? Kevin? Back in my past, in my past life, um, there was a big concern, boy, we had an attorney at all of our meetings, and we were constantly called about deliberation outside of meetings via email. Uh, we just had a five-member elected board, and we were cautioned heavily, don't comment or deliberate via email or text message. My reading of open meetings, nothing's changed, but I just wanna know what, are we correct in following that process? Is that what the city attorney recommends for council as well? Because related to what Mike just suggested, um, can we as individual members send a comment to, I guess Dale is chair of the committee, outside of a meeting, or have we now created a, uh, a situation?
So I think the way I've perceived it in the past is that, um, you don't want to have any email threads that contain a quorum of the body. And so you've set up a subcommittee, which is only three, which isn't a quorum, um, and, and the subcommittee is ta- tasked with working together to, to put policies together to bring before this entire body. So you should be able to communicate amongst yourselves, just the three of you, just the three in the subcommittee, uh, on this particular item, as you are formulating your, uh, recommendations that will come before the, um, committee as a whole. Just know that at any time, someone can file a, uh, request for information and, and ask if they, for whatever reason, they feel like something's been underhanded, they can ask for those emails to be presented. But there's nothing wrong with, uh, a subcommittee, a non-quorum of communicating about these items, especially since that subcommittee's been authorized by the committee as a whole to operate and investigate a particular issue.
But I'm not on that subcommittee. If after this meeting, I read this, this, this policy and I, oh, well, I think it's just, we need to rewrite or we need to add, I can't do that, correct?
So what, yes, you can, what you can do is you can formulate, because you, you've been asked, excuse me, you've been asked by the subcommittee to provide input on the document that they presented. And so you absolutely can send your, uh, information to them. And, and what I'd suggest, you could even include the entire subcommittee on your communication. What is prohibited and highly frowned upon is then for a discussion to happen amongst the four of y'all. Um, what should happen is, you should take your recommendation, send it to the entire subcommittee, and then they should take those and have an offline discussion amongst themselves about what you've sent, not including you. You can do that, they can do that. And then the whole, the whole crux of that would be, the subcommittee would then, after they've taken in input from everybody, they would do their work of the subcommittee, they would formulate a document they all agree on, they would bring that document back before the entire, uh, board, which would be discussed in open session, and anybody would have the opportunity to see what's being presented, you know, any citizens, for example, um, and so everything would be above board. But just avoid having any email thread amongst more than the subcommittee. You can send something, but that should be a one-way street. You sending something to the subcommittee, and no more discussion amongst that four should happen.
Thank you, Kevin.
You bet.
Okay, we have maybe four minutes left before David Street cuts us off.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to recommend that the committee presents at an upcoming meeting, probably a special meeting of the library advisory board, um, a document that can be improved, approved en masse, the whole thing as one unit, instead of me sitting here and writing notes on this copy. So I'd like the committee to recommend, at the next meeting, a complete package that's agreed upon and can be recommended as a whole. Is that okay with the committee members?
That would mean that any, any library advisory board member would forward to me their suggested changes, correct?
Yes, yes.
Right.
Well, it sounds like we'll, if we have a comment, we'll forward it to the, probably the three committee members, Mike Zadel, Tricia and you, plus Jan.
Okay.
So please, if anybody, Tricia, Holly, anybody's suggestions, it goes to the whole subcommittee. Good.
And we can have a, like a drop dead date on that.
Well, I think we need to, let's, in our last couple of minutes, when do you wanna have a special board meeting? I'm looking at the calendar now, it is, uh, Oc- April 12th. We could have one on, uh, May 17th, which is about a month away, a Monday. Um, you, what do you think, we can get into the library and do this in person, Jan? Can we set up a May, the end of May date? You think that would be safe to meet at the library, or?
I can, possibly, I cannot, I cannot make any, a complete, uh, promise of that right now. It'd be really great if we could, I would try.
Okay, Kevin.
And Sharon, um, don't be, don't be thinking about the library meeting room, thinking about the city council chambers for where you wanna do.
Yeah.
And, and one other.
All right, I'll try to set up, I'll try to set up a near end of May date with the council chambers and advise everyone.
And, and Sharon, if I could, one of the, the other, one of the comment I'd make is, is I, I, as soon as we get off here, I'm gonna be sending my questions to Erin about Elaine and some of these other things. But before you finalize a final date for that meeting, let me get that feedback and, and funnel it to you, Sharon, and then you can forward, make that part of your considerations when you have the next meeting.
Excellent, excellent.
And Sharon, can we have comments? Can we have the comments relating to the annual review of the long-range plan done within the next week?
One week, you want a one-week deadline?
Is there anybody that can't beat a one-week deadline for that? No, nobody?
Well. Okay, so on, um, April 19th, which is a Monday, one week from now, you would like everyone to s- submit your comments and suggestions, and then you'll set up a date for your subcommittee to meet and review those after.
Absolutely.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I don't know if we just go blank or what happened, we've got one minute, anything? Thank you all for coming, it's always, always informative and wonderful. Thank you, Holly, thank you, Dale, for getting this ready, Jan. Let's open the library, Kevin. All right. Bye, everyone, I'll be in touch. Me adjourned.